Cindy has guaranteed that all the electronic stuff is going to work perfectly today?
Uh, I don't call that.
This is closer. I can actually see that up there right now.
It does seem closer.
Yeah, doesn't it?
Is it really? It might be a little closer because the other one is just-
Well, actually, normally you're over here, Carly, and I'm over there.
That's right. That's right. We're totally like-
Well, we'll have to wait till the numbers come up. So this is kind of the mirror image, you see?
It is.
So, this is Board of Selectmen meeting for February 25th, 2020 regarding the annual budget for 2021, Budget Review Workshop. So we'll come to session, we'll call it to order, and Cindy, you want to give us the bad news to start?
Well, I have a couple up in the- This is a start for each of you. If you have it, I'll walk through where we're at, just to give you-
Hello.
Okay. Come on in.
Not used to this side.
No, I know. Neither do we.
So what you have at the very top was everybody's budget request, 37 million. And then walking down changes we made. The HR piece and shared services, the adjustments to different fringe benefits, coming down to economic development, taking out the sewer study, adding money into the historic district commission, open space, decreasing the appraisal services because they're going to get the Neighborhood Existence Act money, reducing one public works employee of new requests. Let me be clear there. Not only honoring one of the two. And then we have some retirements which will impact the wage rate, reduced propane based on the approval of a wood stove. Snow removal was one of our follow-up items. If there is an additional public works employee, we can take 19,000 out of contracted services for snow removal. Tree removal, Rob had asked that I take it down to a half million dollars from 1.75.
So actually, I said take it down to a half million.
Yeah, I did.
You took a half million off, so-
No, I didn't.
No, she took off one point.
I took one point.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. You did. There is. I'm sorry. You did. I'm sorry. You did. I'm sorry.
I did.
I should have known, but I was just looking at it quickly. I'm sorry.
Blake Hayward. So I had a nice chat with Randy and Felicia, and what they did is they asked for their money, both in operating and capital. So I took the 37.5 out of operating, but then when they requested capital, they requested at the full amount and not when the share of 50/50. So the other thing is the, under interfund transfers, it's just the reductions to capital from taxation. So just on some changes, I have it below, so you can see that 204,000 highlighted, the Grange windows, the well at the Harris property, pushing out a police cruiser, not needing the money for the boiler, and then dusting the Lakes Association. So, right now, oops, the bottom line there is, probably sitting on the copier, is 36 million, 159, 895. And then one other quick thing to share with you is some follow-up items. And the first one, I can see I haven't factored it into a couple of, I've got to do that, is I just talked to the registrar's office. We can remove 600 from the budget for phone, so I will make that change. Again, Beth, the snow removal. The question about tonnage bulky in and out, Beth is working on. We'll get it to when we have. I had emailed on the fire department radios to the fire commissioner, Ann Craig, saying, "I know there's pagers and stuff for the fire department, but are you each budgeting for replacement repair radios? And is there an opportunity to reduce that?" I'm waiting to hear back, so that might be something that'll have to go to the Board of Finance once we have a final number. And BOS stipends, you can see below, I've started calling different towns to find out what the first selectman is paid and what each selectman is paid. I'm waiting to hear back from Adam. Well, Saybrook left me a voicemail, and I'm thinking the number she quoted for each selectman might be for both, so I'm trying, because it was in the $8,000 range. So I'm trying to, I emailed her for clarification, and I emailed Westbrook. In Colchester, there is no compensation for board members. In East Hampton, just to note that there's a town manager, and council members are not compensated.
But first is the town manager. Is that what that's by?
So those, that's the information on selectmen stipends, salaries. We asked about the municipal employee retirement fund rates. Yes, it was increased a half a percent on July 1.
For the employee contribution?
Correct. And then building salaries, you had asked me, it looked like it was a higher increase. It was because the new employee was hired at slightly more than we had budgeted for, so it's just a budget to budget. And I already told you about the lakes.
So with the MRF, is there a corresponding 0.5% decrease on our side?
Right. Dawn had adjusted that. Yes, yes. And we've received the benefit of retiring employees as well. So... So the number I had given you of the 36 million, 159 includes the $600, so I just have to add it to the sheet. And there was a question, I just put it on this follow-up with regards to legal advertisements with the different land use boards, and there was an issue with a vendor that has since been cleared up in the billing. So you'll see some money expended. And then I do have one final piece for you. And this has to do with reserving for fire apparatus. And I told you I was looking at some scenarios based on the current requests. We believe there'll be adjustments, but I just wanted to give you a flavor of where we stand. So on the right side was what was projected, and on the left side is now what's being asked. With the understanding that some of those items could go down to refurbished. In last year's projections, we were, would take five years to ramp up to 120 a year to reserves. And in this projection, we would go 150, 170, 180, 190, 210, just in my estimations, is to build up to be able to acquire what is being requested. Now, if the grant for that one truck were to fall through, there'd be 300,000 more in that fund, and then we could adjust it again. This is just some modeling for you.
So just making sure I'm clear. So previously, we were looking at $100,000 as the projected transfer in from the budget, and now kind of meet the actual needs of 150 in this year?
Meet the requests.
150 this year, 170.
And then you would keep continuing to ramp it up. And again, in your discussion, and I believe the fire commissioners are working on whether or not some of these don't have to be new and they can be refurbished. So this will be an adjustment and update by the time, hopefully by the time it goes to Board of Finance. They'll be equipped with some more info.
Well, as you can see, with the current proposal for equipment, out 10 years almost will be in the hole, but you're going to have to be putting a lot of money aside in the interim.
Well, and I think also to actually know what we're dealing with, we have to find out if we can refurbish. I mean, that's a big question right now.
And I know that, Robbie, you met with Jiffy on that, and she's working on that.
Yep. Because the information we had, had the wrong vehicle had been refurbished initially, so.
And then back to, and y'all have heard it a lot, but implementing this new capital plan has been an eye-opener, and it's going to be painful, but it's going to provide a little more reality.
It's a real window of what is required of us.
And then I also have for the screen as you start to talk, Reese, I think it was you. Let's see if this is going to work. On Saturday, I said, you know, it might be easier to look at things somewhat combined. So I just boiled things down, so you can see a snapshot in one screen. Let me just get it. There we go. So what I did on this is at the top, just the totals by general government, public safety, public works, et cetera, all the way down. And then interfund transfers, this is where the Utah capital. So if you look at debt service, it's down 49,872, but the capital project savings is up the 49,872. That's our savings plan for debt. The kicker here is the 1,056,713 for capital. And that's after looking at all the capital requests and what there is for reserves allotted for them, state grants, and assumption of bonding. And right now, I have a placeholder in of the fire department reserve of 75,910, but if you look at the scenario I gave you, that would have to go to 150. Based on this sheet.
But again, without knowing on the refurbished equipment, you can't make any decision.
Right. And to give you all a quick update, one of the things we talked about is it might be fruitful for you to join the Board of Finance on a Saturday in a meeting. I'm working with Bill DiChristofar, the chairman of the Board of Finance, to structure the meetings. Our financial and municipal advisor for debt is willing to come to the March 14th meeting and talk about all these projects. Rob and I will meet with him Thursday when we issue, we sell some debt. But to start looking at, okay, these are what are identified as priorities by the Long Range Capital Improvements Committee. Is this achievable? You know, just to play out scenarios and give an idea.
I want to do that.
You want to do what?
Eat with the Board of Finance.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that's essential.
Because the bottom half of the screen is really not necessarily the Board of Selectmen's decision, and it is something that the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance need to work together on. But also, it goes back into talking about planning. And to really come out of this, the process is given as a product we expected, which is knowing what we need to plan for, but then to establish that plan.
And do you anticipate having the, is this capital improvement planning group meeting again on this Thursday?
No.
No, they're not.
Okay, so they're done for this?
They're done for now. The way we, it's envisioned is that they got through the buildings and improvements. Next year's more, and we'll go back to them in May, talk about what shook out through the budget, May or June, with the budget process, and to get their feedback on the process. Because there are some comments, and, you know, we set up the system, and I think it really works, but it could use some tweaks. I think Rob would agree that there's some things we could simplify. But you don't know until you put it into action.
I think it was great. And always, we can, you can tweak it, but I thought this was the first year you used it. It was very good.
Yeah, it was. Harvey and I, who've been working on this for months, with Bill, were quite happy.
You should be.
I think you have so much of the emotionality around all of this stuff.
Correct.
What? There's emotion allowed. It comes along with spending money.
Or not spending.
Or not spending money, yeah.
I think that's potentially the bigger, or equally.
So if you look at the top half and, you know, what the changes are, I mean, we can look at some key budget drivers, but general government is some increases to shared services to provide for a placeholder for a full-time HR person, the payroll service, and the Board of Ed request to continue to fund their technology. And then employee benefits, because the budget also has two new people in it. And then public safety is largely up because of asking for a new additional person for the fire department, the 911 service, Craig planning for radio repairs. Trying to think there was without, there was, those were some of the key points. Public works, there was a reduction in general highway because there was 100,000 in there for temporary workers last year, and you're looking at giving her one full-time person, and then the reductions from retirements. The key increase here is trees. Health and social services is a 2.6% increase.
So the public works includes the 500 for trees?
Correct. Recreation is up. The lakes, I think the lakes are up slightly, rec is up slightly, but nothing, you know, extraordinary. And then debt service, of course, as we retire it, but we shifted over to the savings plan.
So one thing in recreation is that there's, the additional revenue is not being reflected here, is it?
No, this is separate. I started, I started on Sunday, I worked on the recreation plan, special revenue fund. But we haven't posted credit card receipts for just January yet, so I could give you the info, but it's skewed. It looks like we're losing money when more than that. I mean, if you, if you wanted to hit any high points, another way we could just look at it is if I put up this total sheet, I could just do a calculation for you, and then maybe we come back and focus on anything that stands out, is to look at what your budget is compared to last year. And see if anything jumps out that we wanted to look at, because it's really, you want to look at the big ticket items, right? This window is 365. I'm not used to it. Just going to make it easy on you so you can see. Getting a little small, but the increases, building maintenance and operations is up 8%, but that's for the porch at Millington, right, in the little heat at town offices. You come down to shared services is 12% again, HR, some adjustment for the director of operations, ADP, and the Board of Ed.
ADP?
I did say P U T.
T.
I keep doing that. We're not getting a security system.
We know what you're doing.
You know, so here's, the town office building is up for a little for heat, you know, percentage. Fringe benefits is a big one, and we've had, we've got new employees in here, and we've had people come on the insurance. So we've benefited from them, not in the past, but they're on now. We do have insurance out to bid, and we'll have those results when the Board of Finance is looking at the budget, so hopefully then we can have some benefit there. Board of Finance now looks like it's up 27,000, but it's not. That's the contingency. So they've transferred 27,000 out this year to capital, so it's just returning it to its original budget. Conservation's asked for a little more. Historic District is up 250% or $2,800.
Sometimes the percentage, you're like, depending on, when your budget is zero.
So is there any budgets in there that you want to dive into and look at further?
So, just looking at that, what are we looking at? Because what always comes down for people is mill rate increase with our current, so the percentage was what?
This is just, this is just general government.
Yeah, yeah.
We haven't done anything else. 9%. And unfortunately, you know, general government, and I don't break it out, you have some volatile things in there, like fringe and stuff, that gets rolled into general government.
And we have no control. We can't do it. Right, exactly. I mean, that's what I was just going to say. We can knock out a couple of them that we have, have no control over.
But of the 343,000, 149 of it is fringe.
And that's, how many employees came on to this, on terms of insurance? That are not new hires that we're contemplating, but-
I believe three. And it can be whether they're single, two, or family. I believe there's three, and I'm aware of two person and a family. So that's, off the top of my head, the town, that's like 40, 50,000.
The Board of Finance, we don't need to look at.
No, because that's, right. And they are, they are up slightly to do the comprehensive annual financial report and additional things.
The conservation commission, and where did we, what did we say about that?
So that's confusing, because that money usually goes into capital, but it's below the amount, so it goes into, yeah.
Operating?
It's operations for maintenance and everything, but it's-
The transfer. We, last year, we really looked at some accounts and thought, these aren't capital items. They're really operating, so it moves over to their special revenue fund.
So that's used for all the parking areas and things like that. Again, those are one-time expenses, because once the parking area's in, it's done.
Right. But is it something we need this year in this budget?
I don't think you'd eliminate the maintenance bonus of that.
Well, it goes into maintenance and everything else that is associated with that. I don't remember what's still in that account, but I could look it up.
There was, yeah.
There was, there was a fair amount of money, but part, a big part of that was we couldn't touch, because that was for the forestry program.
Right. And the transfer over was also to?
Brought the money forward from, that was in capital from last year.
There was also in the money survey costs.
Oh, yeah, that was a survey.
To transfer over to the special revenue fund.
I would say offhand, no, you probably shouldn't be touching it, because backbite us, or we'll be looking for additional monies, so.
Or we don't want to do that, for sure.
No, I'm just-
Number 10, 3, and 5.
I think the question you had asked earlier about the budget as stands with the 500,000 for trees brings us to a net budget of 36,159, right?
Right. And that's- That's a 2.81 mill rate increase.
That's a what?
2.81. Of that, so you're looking at a 2.8, 2.6 increase. But capital right now, let's see if I can go over here. Capital right now is an increase of a million dollars.
Right. That's not even counting.
Right. And that's the discussion I have with the Board of Finance based on-
How are we going to deal with all that?
And Jay, you have a, look, we have a new capital committee, so we really worked with every department and board and commission to identify, to look at their assets. We had to identify and say, you know, when do these need to be replaced? So we really got people thinking about that. So we have items some might call wish list, but others just call, we need to, we need to start working and planning. So that's why we got a huge capital request this year. It was quite the exercise. So, you know, if you-
And we won't be doing all the capital this year, I can tell you.
No. This is true. So-
And can you explain the rationale about not getting, when, when is it appropriate to look at a short-term loan for things like trees that's half a million dollars versus that's-
Right.
Kind of this enormous expense that has to be dealt with, but-
That's something we can ask Bill Lindsey to layer in and look at.
Right.
So the Board of Finance, and then ultimately the approval, to do anything like that is a resolution of both boards. But we can ask Bill to look and layer that in.
Right.
And then you'd have to look at, you know, and I'm just throwing something out there again. So if you're saying, Robbie, you'd like to do a half million a year, do you do, if people approve it, a note for five years for 2.5 and pay off a half million a year?
So the reality is that if we did go the route of a loan, then I increase the tree budget to a million, if we're going to go that way, for example, because the, it makes more sense to, if we're going after a loan, to process project in a more timely manner than spreading it out over a number of years.
Could, to tackle the volume.
Yeah, tackle the volume, right.
But what you have to look at is, again, we'll layer it all in, and, and there's debt policies for the town with the Board of Finance to ensure that we're meeting those.
Right, yeah.
But those are, that's why I think to have the two boards and Bill Lindsey come in is going to be very helpful free, once he's done the modeling, to see where we stand.
What was that date again?
14th. 14th. So the Board of Finance is meeting the 7th, the 14th, and the 21st.
So up presenting what little I can on the 7th, whatever we decide on tonight. I mean, it's unusual that we have all this stuff that probably we can't make a decision on, because it depends on how Board of Finance wants to move along, but we- But we can certainly discuss some of these items for capital, so have a.
Right, but we're not.
Discussion.
We can have a discussion, but without kind of some of the modeling, it feels like a very, not ill-informed discussion, but.
On capital, yes.
Yeah, on capital.
Capital, and perhaps trees. And there's been years in the past that the board of selectmen has not said, here's our increase in the mill rate because like the year of they wanted to push teachers' retirement out, you know, that was like, there's been times when the board doesn't push a fully whatever budget because you, it's, you don't have the information to do that.
Right.
And I think for me, trees is a huge part of that conversation. Kind of just talking with the board of finance, like, yeah, about where they are about addressing the tree too. And then the, the, because I mean, it, it was 150 this previous year was what we allocated for trees, right?
150,000, right?
Yeah, so.
350,000 increase.
A $350,000 increase is a, is a huge chunk. And it doesn't.
It's huge, but it probably won't be a drop in the bucket, so.
Right, and it doesn't really, it like partially addresses the issue, but if we spend $500,000 and take down trees and there's a category one hurricane, it's still going to take, like, if we don't actually address the issue, half addressing the issue means that it's possible that people are out of electricity for up to three months. Because that's what our source is saying. And so, like, half addressing the issue, you feel, so it's, I mean, it's scary.
And it's, there, and Rob, you discussed this too, is the option for FEMA. I wish FEMA would get on board with this.
Well, it's got to come from the governor's office and we got to get the COG on board to, supposedly NICOG is on board, but trying to get a disaster declaration, but, um. Most recent information you sent me, I think, is woefully inadequate because I got information from Beth Lunt yesterday that we have 318 school bus stops in town and on average, there's three trees per school bus stop that are hazardous. So, which comes out to be 940. Use a thousand dollars per tree, you're just under a million for that.
Yeah, and every source just announced that they're putting 86 million into.
Oh, really?
Yeah, um, for the whole state, but that, like, again, that, I mean, that's a huge investment by them, but still doesn't necessarily.
No, we're looking potentially, and, and best number may not be that far off at 1.75, but we just, we're still waiting on figures based on a whole bunch of variables and she's putting those together for us, so now we'll have to, the, be for discussion on this seventh, the fourteenth, so.
The, the goal is on the seventh to hear from Rob, hear from Brian Reese, perhaps bring in any other, the fire department and other, so they hear the concerns.
Right, yeah.
Then hear Bill's modeling the next week, Bill Lindsey, and then they can begin discussion so that ultimately, hopefully by the 21st, they can make a decision. But if they, they choose to look at some debt, then it, it comes off the capital plan, if you will, and then it goes through the whole process of public hearings and, and a referendum to, for debt.
Including the short-term loans or?
That would require, yeah, that would, that would require a referendum or town meeting.
I, I actually think that's a great idea to have people kind of engage in this conversation, like the general public.
So you can hear the information.
Yeah, so they can hear the information and we can also hear from them about their concerns or not concerns around this issue.
Again, it's a steep number, but at least it's not like another issue we had earlier this year, surprise. Or hopefully, you're not going to eliminate surprises, but we certainly can reduce the margin of them. One would hope.
1.5 is, you got to get a hard attack.
Well, not this year.
Uh, so let's, looking at these figures again, the percentages there, you want to go back to the beginning and just, is that the beginning?
Okay.
And go through any of those we want to talk about?
I mean. Third, that kind of one, one by one.
I know.
Yeah, but now, now what I'm saying is that you're seeing it in this format and is there anything else we want to address? I mean, most of those increases are related to salaries, not all, but most of them.
So why don't we just eliminate which ones we have no control over? So, I mean, and, and, which is? Again, what was in the building maintenance and operations?
That's the maintenance, um, that takes care of the Grange Hall, the town hall, the Millington Schoolhouse. There's a porch in there for the Millington Schoolhouse, which is falling.
So, so it's basically all the structures outside of here that we're responsible for maintaining, so, all the other buildings.
Right, and some are in dire need, I mean, the.
Other issues showing up.
Yeah.
Then 200 years, it's starting to show up.
And that's also the River House in the annex.
Like River House in the annex, Grange.
The only one that's on its own is the town office building.
Old Town Hall.
No, for example.
We addressed Grange Hall, we're within the last few years and the windows, capital the only things out there for that. We addressed, um.
Foundation at Millington.
The foundation on the old town hall, the things that needed to happen there.
And same with Millington?
Yeah, Millington, we addressed, you know, they're, now we're just finishing up the end of what Millington needs.
So, for example, down at the old town office down in the center.
That's not in this budget.
I know it's not in this budget, but I'm just saying, right now, we have to address some railing issues on the stairs that went up to the top of the second floor, which at the very least, we may have to replace all of that, which seems kind of a shame, but it, we're also going to be working in there, removing stuff and everything, so we should have a safe set of stairs. I mean, it's everything.
The collector, the tax collector again, what was that increase?
It's just basically wages, she might have tweaked in there.
Right, to, right. Oh, she has conferences or this, yeah, that's.
She decreased her mileage, yeah.
Right, right, right.
So, I mean, the major increases are all personnel related, right?
Well, shared services is increasing, we're adjusting for some personnel.
Right.
Land use office, what was?
It's 2 percent, so.
It's salaries also.
It's, that's, yeah, there's probably reductions because it's, salaries are budgeted two and a half. That even shows you, land use rounded, it's, his request is less than the increase to salaries. Shared services, the increases are for the ADP, for school computers, and the adjustment for HR and director of operations.
And the new public works salary is offset partially by this.
20,000.
$20,000 decrease to snow contract.
Correct.
And it's also partially offset because we had 100,000 in for temporary wages and we're not, and we are having two retirements, which brings the wages down and benefits down.
With the fire department getting a full-time person, do they still need all of their part-time staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was just to resolve the issues during the day.
And the part-time staff are only going to fill available shifts.
Okay, and so they're, that's like on, on an as-needed basis and not a, okay, it's pretty good.
No.
Keep looking, there's no way we can make those numbers change.
I know it's not a lot of money here, but the agriculture commission, have they used any money in the last few years?
Nope.
So.
The last time they spent.
I mean, it's not a lot of money, it's like, but something, we're looking at here and we're not coming up with anything. If we start somewhere, maybe it'll get us rolling.
They spent money was in 14, 15, and it was a transfer into the special revenue fund.
So five years ago, and.
And they don't have a recording secretary?
No.
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 I went back and tried to meet tons and tons of town minutes, I remember being on, I was spotty whether or not there's various things.
Well, they're meeting for very spotty.
Yeah, no, I know, and I don't, I don't mean that as a.
The commission's meeting? The ag commission?
Yeah, but, yeah.
Well, you got to send an agenda in to have a meeting. So, there's a thousand dollars you can start with if you want it, but we, I mean, it's, where else do we go?
I mean, there's, you know, can you, can you scroll down?
Keep, keep going a little, yeah.
Do you want to look at the other areas as well?
Yeah.
I don't think we need. Here's public safety.
Big jump there is for 911 services.
Yeah, so then it's 911 and, and some radio, radio, remember the radios have a maintenance plan and that's for a portion of the year, and then that's going to jump from 12.5 to 50 in 21, 22. Because there are no warranty, yeah.
Building department?
That's just wages and $500 for code books.
Right.
Fire department is wages and building and vehicle maintenance and increased equipment and gear for. For the firefighters. And we're still waiting to hear on the radio, so there might be some opportunity there.
The maintenance is there because if they're going to be going to the new radio system, then they don't have to worry about so much. I don't remember what was in there for the repairs, maintenance.
They had 7,200 and I asked them to look to see if they can reduce that at all, given that they're going to have radios from the project.
Because that's going to be across the board, public works do, and, uh.
I think it's pretty much for everyone, yeah.
And the police officers are, it was equipment for the new.
For the new SRO.
SRO.
There is training, some new training requests. They want, there was Narcan or the purchase of, or maybe not, yeah, purchase of Nar, outfitting them with Narcan.
They already have that, it was the.
Was it updated, uh, yeah, so.
It was the SRO needed.
Well, I think he has everything now.
There, there's all, he needed the rifle.
Right, there's a new rifle, plate carrier, new rifle.
And was there a vest that was in there somewhere as well?
Yeah, I think there's.
Yeah. They've increased gasoline, diesel, you know, $5,000. Let me see what they are this year. But we added another car, that's the issue, so. So you are keeping the ser, the four cars, it would make sense, but the fifth car, you don't want to take that chance.
Right.
They boosted 2,000 for the vehicle maintenance because of, uh, additional miles and therefore the additional potential for repairs.
Yeah, the employee training has gone up, and I guess, again, is that because of the SRO?
I don't think it's just the SRO, I think there's just.
Everybody.
Do a better, not better, but increased training.
But Cindy, you were saying it's possible to send to the board of ed, I mean, the board of finance, our budget without what we're recommending for capital.
Yeah.
And without what we, what, without trees? Or we would potentially.
It'd start with something.
Something for trees, but.
And this year, I, I mean, next year, would you want to do that in capital? No, because then hopefully we've achieved this more, um, established capital plan. Because this year was the, the launch of the, the policy. So certainly you can do what you want to do here and indicate that you'd like to have the dialogue on capital and hear from, um, our municipal financial advisor and work with the board of finance to do that. And, and, and we've discussed some of this with Bill because I understand we, we, we're just entering a new era of how we were doing things and capturing things.
Yeah.
And, and really, the, the whole responsibility of it doesn't just lie with you guys, it's both boards.
And with the modeling that will actually help us.
Tell us what we can and can't do.
I had little pieces of paper cut out all over my floor and I was trying to move things around and I was like, I can't do this.
Bill's.
It wasn't, yeah, like, there's an expert in this.
He's excellent at it.
Right, yeah.
Can we just take public works now? Got too much stuff here. Go back and take typing. It's not wanting to. So, general highways because of the adjustment and the staffing and temporary is down. Snow removal, we've taken down contracted services in sand and salt. Transport station's up 6 percent and the trees are up 234 percent.
I mean, potential, potentially the, the, the snow might also be less because we have our sand and salt.
Already purchased.
Oh, yeah, I brought the white.
Duck file.
For next year, if the weather cooperates.
Yeah, I've had this at my house here, they're green, snow pro, sustainable winter operations.
And that's another opportunity with the board of finance because they're going to be talking about it late into March, whereas you all have another month to go.
Right.
And not to be seeming like you're kicking the can down the road, but a lot of the times when we build these budgets, we don't have final numbers till, sometimes after the budget's approved.
There's some major final numbers.
So.
Spend $23 on snow removal, so for that shit.
That's just a January year-to-date number that I think is incorrect.
Yeah.
I think I hit a key.
We had to buy two new shuttles.
Or left a couple pieces.
I'll highlight it and you'll check it.
The front steps of the building.
Because I think, what's, what's, I think we've used, uh, almost half of it or something like that, if I remember correctly.
I could tell you in a second.
Which is scary, but we had a lot of storms that came on weekends and ice is sometimes worse to deal with than, and they were ice storms than, uh, snow.
Oh, I gave you the resol, the, uh, adjusted resolution, I double-spaced it because I.
A lot of your budget is public safety.
Right.
I mean, that's the struggle.
I'd like literally, the trees are public safety and the fire department is public safety and the HR person, like, in abstract, is kind of public safety. We didn't too.
Liability.
Yeah, liability.
There's 140,000 left in the snow removal budget out of 267. There's a hundred and forty thousand left in the snow removal budget out of two sixty-seven.
You were? You did say that, yeah.
Yes, there's always the option that if, you know, if we're in there and the end of, we're coming up towards the end of March, we might be able to tap into that for this year, because that goes away for tree removal, continuing tree removal.
That's a good discussion for Board of Finance, say it after authorization.
That's what I'm saying, Board of Finance discussion, right, but if it looks like we're not gonna expend it, typically, that goes away, so. Good to, yeah, good to that, with permission.
All right, I will stop wishing for the snowstorm.
No, no, no.
Go to Canada, Teresa, then.
Actually, you need to go to North Carolina, they had a lot of snow down there.
They did. So we look at their, they, they requested two employees. We said one, I mean, maybe we can't even afford that right now.
But the thing with that is then we don't have the offset in the.
Snow removal, which covers almost half of that employee.
But this, so the snow.
For next year, right?
Right, right. But the snow removal is contracted.
Right.
That nineteen thousand is contracted, it still comes, still comes out of that, that money though.
Right, but currently in sand, it doesn't snow anymore.
It's con- right, it's con- it, right. So, you know, we're paying hourly, we're not paying a new employee with fringe benefits.
Correct, but they also talked about the kind of repairs to culverts and things that aren't happening because they don't have the person.
No, so some of that gets contracted out, but that's a little bit more nebulous to put a figure on, isn't it?
But there's also the.
And again, contracted, you know, is by the hour.
Well, you, right, and, well, it's usually by the jobs and those types of things.
Right.
And we discussed that next year we can relook at Public Works and there's that person.
That's right, because you know at least one person's retiring in fifteen months, so be a good opportunity to reevaluate and see if.
If we leave that without being failed.
We could possibly leave that one.
Right, yeah, and then we can.
That won't save us the money this year, but it will potentially next year.
It's an opportunity to see if it works out.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
See if the goals are being met, which we'll have to evaluate hopefully multiple times over the year.
So again, where do we cut then?
Chatham Health District, there's nothing we can do there.
There's nothing, right, yeah, exactly.
Mostly that's, yeah, it's per capita, that's Everbridge.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, the other conversation is around potentially HR. We went from no HR to full HR, whether or not halftime HR would kind of fill some of the major concerns that we have around HR.
What's your thought about halftime on that?
We had seventy-five thousand in this year's budget and we built it up by forty-one thousand more.
So.
To make it flow.
I think, let me double check that number.
So, so at the Chatham District, I thought Health District meeting, I asked, uh, Andy Tierney, what do they have when we're in, um, Tewa. And, uh, he does not have a HR person for his staff, but they do have the, have like full-time. For their two elementary schools and the high school, I think, so.
Well, but that's, the high school's a region.
The high school's a region, but they do have a, I, I thought you said just a elementary school, they have an HR person.
Yeah, I don't know, but they're, the high schools.
That's odd.
So it's, but it's a little different, cause a lot of their employees are in the region, they're not their employees, they're the regions.
Regions.
Complicated.
Yeah.
But anyway, they do have an HR person for that part, and we're looking for one for both, and we have two hundred, two hundred employees.
Right.
And eight unions and a whole bunch of Indian contracts.
It's complicated, right.
And, and that was the discussion earlier on, we have, I think, significant liabilities. We're not, it's almost impossible for, for me or, or Brian or anyone to keep up with the, uh, changes that are going on in, in human resources regulations and.
I agree.
I'm a few running into seeing some of that too in the state, but, uh, no. Some mandates that come down through are.
No, I agree, but.
Right, yeah, and we also discussed that we don't think having elected officials in charge of major HR decisions is.
Terrible.
Good for the town in a, a variety of ways.
No. But I guess the question is, eh, full-time or part-time, is it, is there a benefit to go? You know, is it penny-wise, what does that say?
Right, pound foolish.
Pound foolish kind of a thing, to do that.
Well, there's a discussion coming up on that on.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next Tuesday.
With Board of Finance, no, with.
Uh, Book, Board of Ed and myself and, uh, Blom Shapiro.
Oh, okay, so that, so we'll answer, I mean, I think we already know what our answer is. But we're just need to throw it out there and know that.
There's so many things where it's like, in a week, we will have the information.
That's the hardest ever.
Exactly, exactly.
So close.
We're that week off.
In that, we would've had that, except that one got, that'd be really scary.
That got canceled two, three weeks ago, or we would have that piece.
Right, yeah.
All right, so.
And once you go through this.
I mean, I really think we need a full-time one because of the number of employees that we have.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree.
And the potential problem, liabilities, exactly, but.
And, and significant losses would easily.
Pay for it, yes, like.
Several times over. And we, so, the health, total health and social services basically is the raise, is our, our salary changes.
Per capita, Chatham Health.
Right.
Yeah.
And Ever, and Everbridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, public safety.
That's, yeah.
With, with, with the increase on averages of.
The twenty percent to youth and family is for the early childhood is.
Yeah, that's, that's. If you look at the big picture, it's only two, two point five, five percent.
Right. So the Lakes Association has their capital request and then the Lake Hayward's still asking for seven thousand five.
So what it comes down to, let me just pull that budget up so you can see it.
Yeah.
But then when she starts doing that, they're gonna look.
I know, I get, I, I get dizzy.
I get worse at dizzy.
I went by it. So now the request is right here. I'm not having a good day.
Just jumping on.
But on the other hand, it hasn't dropped out either, so.
No, it hasn't.
So they asked for forty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
But now it's, it's, Beishan is at eighty-two, like Hayward is at eleven-five and Mudus is at ten. It has been in the last two budget cycles, the resolve of the board to give them equal amounts.
And so the justification on the Lake, Lake Hayward was what, again?
They put the capital in two places.
Right, but the eleven thousand dollars is a purch- some purchase of.
So the lakes are given money each year for edu-
Several, too many, too, a lot of money.
For education and what have you, um, and you might wanna look at their capital as well, but a lot of what they're giving is, is purely for some basic remediation and education for the, the, uh, associations.
So what if we just go back down to what the budget has been, at seventy five?
Well, we actually gave more last year.
Yeah, seventy-five hundred each.
Seven, right there, isn't it?
That's what we did give last year.
Yeah.
Well, we had some, that was brought over, that went to.
So what happened in their asking, and it's, it's a valuable question, last year Mudus didn't spend their, a good portion of their money and they asked if it could be transferred over to by the eco-harvester. So what the boards are asking and the Board of Finance can address through policy, is that they have operating money left, it can go into their capital reserves or for capital projects.
Right.
Which.
Right.
Yeah, which sounds, which that makes sense.
That's okay. But I, again, I see.
And did, do we know what they do with the seven point, the, the seven thousand five hundred? You said it's education.
They, they, they could be, there could be a multitude of things and they have to do a fifty percent match. So they come to me at year end, so for example, last year they all had approved, with the exception of Mudus, that they spent twice six sixty-six. Sixty-six, sixty-seven. So they bring to me receipts showing them that they've expended at least double that and then we will, we will do our match. So we're, they, they have skin in the game, if you will, as well, and usually they far exceed what we've given them.
What they generate.
Right. What they generate, yes.
I think that thing, I, the seventy-five hundred to me sounds very fair with their match, I mean.
Yeah, that's where I.
I think eleven thousand is a lot of money.
Yeah, for that.
Well, they had a lot of progress.
I love Lake Hayward, but I think.
Sure, but they also have their own tech maintenance that they can, I mean, they have reserves and.
Right.
And again, I will go back to the fact that they do not have a public beach.
But Beishan Lake doesn't either.
No, I know.
The only one that does is the town beach on the reservoir, so, um, but you're right, I think, so the benefit to the town is extremely limited. They both have public boat launching, but again, the town people are very limited as to their use, so. I'm, I'm suggesting going back to the seventy-five hundred budget that they've had for the last, looks like two years.
So what I'll say is that, I'll give you their argument, is that because of their taxes, what they pay and everything, that they have a, um.
Right, they have a monetary impact on our ability.
Positive monetary impact, far in excess of what we're giving them, so.
No doubt.
That's the first statement.
And, and we all agree on it, we all agree with that, but where do we start to cut some of this? We, we can't, we can't grant every single wish that comes through here. As much as we would like to, I think this seems to be the simplest in saying if we were to prioritize it again, we were to prioritize this, public safety comes.
Well, cause, and we haven't had a conversation about their capital request yet, Robby.
Right.
And I have info on that, so.
Do you wanna go back to that now, or do you wanna?
Wanna talk their capital now?
Jump over to that for a minute?
Okay.
Do we know what number?
Thunder, Recreation, so it'll be eighteen on to something.
Yeah, the second I'll tell you.
Yeah, page eighteen.
Eighteen. So your initial, cause you ha- you'll have in your books, the Lake Hayward dam reconstruction of fifty thousand.
Yeah, I thought of that.
They were looking for us to do a match on that. And if you look on their capital plan, they were talking about doing that in twenty twenty-four. They've had an engineering study and, um, if the town provides some funding, they can accelerate what they wanna do. And, you know, they're saying it's gonna be thirty-five to twenty-five thousand, so the town match would be somewhere between seventeen-five and twenty-five, which you have in your initial book for the fifty thousand.
Right.
So we've reduced that.
Okay.
The dam drainage, the next one, is not on their capital plan. Apparently, they've been talking to Public Works to see if they can provide assistance in getting that done. I was unable to confirm that with Beth today, our schedule's been jive, where I talked to her once on another topic and then forgot about this. So, um, this is something they'd like to see if Public Works can do for them. And then the third one, the biodetention plan, that is not even on their capital plan, because if I'm stating this correctly, they purchased that piece of parcel and then they've had an engineer looking at it, they did indicate that they're starting to try to reach out to another engineer who's done other major lakes to see if there's a way to, to lower that cost and do it. So, on these items, I mean, these are three brand-new items on capital this year.
One of which potentially Public Works.
If that's something Robby wants Public Works to be doing.
Well, see, that's my whole other question now too, is they're asking us for money and they're asking, I mean, what's it gonna cost our Public Works to do that?
Well, it's taking away from other things, so.
But if it was Public Works doing it, that twenty thousand dollars would come down.
And they're, and they're not looking to do a match on this, they're looking for us to fund this one item. So that's the only item that has not dropped on your sheet, that's why it's not highlighted in yellow.
And are they looking, so, sorry, I know that.
No, keep asking.
So, the, so dam repairs, phase one, on their proposed capital expenditure.
That was the engineering study.
That was the engineering study, that they've already expended ten thousand dollars.
They've done the study, I don't know how much they've expended, but we, we can make that assumption. But if you drop down to twenty-four, that's where they're saying they wanna redo it on their plan and, um.
Which I don't think we have.
So this is the sheet, this is the sheet I gave you in the last meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, cause I told them I was trying to tie their capital request to their.
Yeah, cause.
Right.
Associations capital plan.
Things weren't jiving, we couldn't figure it out.
And we would, we could do that.
But so, them requesting twenty-five in this year, when they're not even looking anywhere.
Well, now that they have their engineering study done, it's my understanding that they're saying that they would have the money if the town was to fund them this year, next year to accelerate.
So they would then expend their own twenty-five?
Yes, up to twenty-five, yes.
Up to twenty-five.
We did tell them, and I need to ask you the source, cause I have my note here, you had mentioned, we told them about Sustainable Connecticut, the Connecticut Lakes and Rivers.
Yeah.
Neighborhood Assistance Act, but the Historic Preservation Grant, they wanted to know what agency that was through, and I told them I would ask you and get back to them. Cause there are some granting opportunities here as well.
So, sorry. I'm assuming that they, the dam repair is not like, when I hear the words dam repair, it feels like that's something that needs to be addressed immediately, but when they were kind of projecting, they weren't talking about doing it until twenty twenty-four. So this could be something where we break up that cost and say, we'll give you ten, ten or ten fifteen, and then by twenty twenty-three, you'll have the, our match to be able to do what you need to do. As, as one proposal of something.
So, so what you're saying is that we give them an allocation each year for the next several years.
But, I mean, potentially, they weren't, if.
They're not looking to do it until the.
From this, this proposed capital expenditure out of their reserve, they were not gonna do this until twenty twenty-four.
Right, right.
So, when I'm thinking about, when I ask the libraries, how many times have you been asking for this? And they're like, it goes back thirteen years. And like, we're at critical points with some capital stuff, this.
It's not one of them.
From, from this vague conversation, is not.
In food for thought, do you do it twelve five and twenty-one, twenty-two and twelve five and twenty-two, twenty-three? And see if any of these grants can provide them with the funding?
That'd be a good way of better, my, I think that probably a better way to look at it.
And I'm happy to work with them on grant stuff.
Does that make sense to do it twelve five the next two years, not twenty twenty-one, but tw- the twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And, and if we, and to look at Sustainable CT and the other options.
And, and, so they're looking in, in next year, developing a watershed management plan?
They had that on their list, yes.
I mean, to me, that is their responsibility, I mean.
Well, that's, yeah, it was a little bit of their policy.
It is on their list, it's not on ours.
Okay, all right, all right, all right.
And that's.
I looked it up, I'm gonna look someone.
They get.
Also, the number, don't believe me, I. Also, the numbers, don't believe me, I. Again, if you look on the other side, what they have in their capital reserve fund.
Yeah.
Which is.
A substantial amount of money, yeah.
Yeah, especially when you look at what their operating budget is.
Right.
They're, they're looking to spend twenty-five thousand, they have reserves of.
Of, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they, and they.
Plus it'll be growing into next year.
Right.
And they indicated this was the first attempt they've done to start identifying and structure it.
Everyone's doing this, which is wonderful.
It is, but it's an eye-opener.
Right. Right.
Well, they couldn't ask us for a special assessment. You know, they're not asking for any special assessments, too, and it seems to me that if, the dam is such a big concern, they would be asking for a special assessment.
Well, the fact that they put it out until twenty-four is saying that it's not.
Apparently.
It's not an issue, it's not a problem.
It needs to be addressed, but it's not a huge issue.
Right, but it's not an immediate
Right, yeah.
danger.
Maybe by then they could apply to the state for a.
Once, once we get through budgets, we gotta jump on Sustainable CT, 'cause they could get around about twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the dam drainage issue and the biodetention basin are not on their capital plan.
Well, so with the, the dam drainage issue, so if we did, so if we had that extra Public Works person that we've been talking about, Carly, that is potentially offsets twenty thousand dollars of snow, and then we like, this cost could, we could say, well. It's like, it's all speculation, right, so it's like, could this cost have, be a tap, and we say, part of the role of that new person we're looking at is to also address that?
And do, and without having the information from Beth on this, whether she has the equipment, manpower, or opportunity to do it.
Right.
So they're, you know, when they're looking at their capital expenditures, they're anticipating that we're going to give them their ninety-five thousand dollars, basically.
Sure.
No, well, the dam repairs, they have fifty thousand dollars in there, and that doesn't.
Not, not for this?
No, if they, you look, I've cut them on what's on the screen, because they've given it to us at the full amount, so you could cut, you can cut the fifty and the twenty-five down. So that's why I cut it down thirty-seven fifty. So, so the, the dam reconstruction, they've given me a budget of fifty, I thought that was our share, it was the whole amount.
Right.
So they would have a match.
Phase two?
But on their proposed.
Oh, no, up here more, I'm sorry.
Fifty. So they're anticipating us not.
See, they're not even on there for this one, that's right, you have, it's line four fifty-nine there, so.
And then that brings them, right, so Rob, on their twenty twenty-four with the dam repairs.
Yeah.
They're anticipating spending fifty thousand?
Yeah.
That, that means they're anticipating us not giving them anything. And so if they were paying for the entirety of the project, not getting anything from us, that brings their reserves down to thirty-two, thirty-two thousand, if they did the entire dam project. And if we gave them half of that, their reserves are at fifty-seven.
It was DNCD.
DNCD?
Yeah.
And SHPO. SHPO, S-H-P-O, State Historic Preservation Project, part of DNCD. So what do you think?
Well, for that one, we did push it out.
We just pushed it out, or you push it right off? Or do we just go, we kick that one year out and just go the other two?
So, this purchase of the hayfield road parcel, I twelve.
That was done last year, this, this fiscal year. Yeah, this, that's, this, all this appears this fiscal year.
Okay.
So, and then this is next week, it's the ending year, that's what.
Okay.
So they want, but they don't even know yet what that whole thing, the biodetention basin is gonna cost.
Honestly, I would give them fifteen.
Oh?
Yeah.
And how are you coming up with that? Gut, like, I'm being generous today?
Okay, so based on the reserves that they have.
Yeah.
The. Yeah, I, I mean, they have reserves, so if we cut them to fifteen, it's not like this doesn't happen. And I know that they, like, and I know they have a plan for their reserves, but when you look at the plan, us cutting that to fifteen, and also it sounds like the biodetention thing, again, we can have a conversation with them next year about that. It, it's not, it's not like we're wiping out their reserves when.
I mean, they're estimating at fifteen to twenty, so if we give them fifteen, then they'll, they.
For the dam.
For the, for the, yeah.
Dam drainage issue for this year.
So reduce that by five?
Reduce that by five and then eliminate the.
Twelve fifty?
Biodetention basin, 'cause they don't even know what that's gonna cost yet. And, you know, and if they get out there far enough and they feel it's essential, which it is at some point, because they don't wanna, they're looking to do that to reduce the transference of all the nitrogens and.
Right, and I.
And everything into the water, but they, again, you know, they can always ask for a one-time or one-year specialist assessment.
And, and that stormwater biodetention could potentially be related to, when I asked about the lakes ponds and reservations account, it's for aquatic invasive species, but I also asked about algae blooms, and they said that would be part of the consideration.
Well, then that would be a consideration for that money.
This would be something that could potentially fall within that grant potential.
Yeah, because of nitrogen from the, and, and bacteria from coming off the fields, what they're concerned is, so they can filter it there.
And it, and it's a, it's a very legitimate.
Yeah, absolutely, it's actually a very good plan, so.
Right, yes, but, so that's, that's kind of where, and also, yeah.
Good? Good? You there? How's it going with that?
Justified it well.
Okay.
Their reserves will go down by five thousand dollars. And then we'll have a conversation should set that grant.
Or maybe more, if they decide they wanna do more of the work.
Right, and, I mean, we, there's also a, this is one of the places where there's a lot of opportunities for grants right now, where we don't necessarily.
And they have people to write them. 'Cause Randy, you know, as a former president of, uh, City Giant Association and everything, and, and Connecticut Lakes and everything, knows how to write grants, so. Okay.
My spreadsheet's set up correctly, it all filtered through, so let's see. It did, so back to your total summary.
Which hasn't changed much.
Hmm?
Which hasn't changed much.
Well, you got this down.
I mean.
If we go back to the expense totals. It doesn't, the lakes, oh, the lakes, do you want the lakes to be seventy-five, 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 or what they've requested?
Right, or back to that page.
Don't wanna miss it.
We can't miss that one, that's.
That petty keeps showing up. So you wanna go with just seventy-five hundred each, keep it the same?
I think so. I mean, I think we're being generous on the other end.
Okay.
You know? With Lake Hayward, I think we are.
And I think, I mean, part of it was, this has all been so confusing that I, I don't necessarily feel like I have a good understanding about what the increase is ever cost for, that like, three thousand dollars, where everyone else kind of gave us broken-out budgets, and I could be like, this is for Narcan, and it, you know what I mean?
Cindy, plug that in.
One of them is not.
And my battery's low. We do not wanna lose this, and recreate, thank you, Carly, and recreate it.
Oh, we decided that's our one, these are movable.
Oh, there it was.
I know, that's why we don't move those.
Now I'm with you.
Okay, you're all plugged in?
I am plugged in.
And it's working.
It says it is.
The other was just an illusion.
We would if we hooked up the plugs in.
Yeah, we could move the plugs.
You don't move them.
Right. I see, they're plugged into the floor.
Yeah, but they also.
I mean, I think the fact that we did compromise on the capital side, that reducing.
Yeah, no, I think for me, it's just that I don't understand what the increase.
Was justified.
Was actually what the.
And we asked for the detail for each, and they were gathering it from the lakes.
Okay, so that might be something that the Board of Finance says, oh my gosh, there's three thousand dollars because X, Y, and Z, and that's not really justifiable, and.
Let's put it back in, right. Let them.
Or not.
Figure that out.
Yeah, no, I know, but.
Well, you've cut the budget forty-seven thousand dollars, almost forty-eight. Did you wanna walk through other capital?
Yeah, I think that's the next thing that.
That's, yeah, where we're at.
So let's go.
Oh, it's okay, that's where we're going.
Yeah. I still proposed cutting a thousand dollars for economic development commissions, increase of a thousand dollars for the.
Pamphlets?
For sure, 'cause I think there's just a lot more online stuff going on, but.
But I think the travelers, I think it's important to have them in the welcome centers, and, I mean, I can see that, and I can see that, you know, if, if she's telling us that people are requesting more because they've been picked up.
Right.
And that's what, you know, I was at the meeting to read those things, that, that was happening.
Right, that's what we have to base it on, and.
Interestingly, when they, when the visitor centers reopen, that's when they got the demand suddenly for them, so they're.
Right, right.
That might also, they find the, like, new things, there's a higher demand in the beginning, and then it kind of tapers off, so.
We could see that.
Connecticut residents are gonna pick up the town and stat thing the first time they go through that, but not necessarily.
When they planned it the first time, the visitor centers weren't open.
Right.
Yeah.
Plan is locked there in the third time.
Right.
Right, and now they are, I mean, I, I can understand that.
The problem is, and, 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 you know, we're looking for if it's worthwhile, but it's almost impossible to determine that, 'cause it's not like people come, come in waving.
With their brochure.
I hope in the future, we're having conversations with them about, like, digital marketing and, like, looking at that, that as.
Well, I think that's kind, well, that's part of the thing with.
Right, I know there was some progress that she was.
Yeah, I, I believe.
I mean, there's.
Shoreline.
Shore, shore, shore CT here, so I don't know.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
But they are working on that.
I think we've gone through the operating budget as, no, for, we've gone through.
Oh, for the operating budget, oh, yeah, okay, okay.
Kind of, a few times now, so.
And we cut out the survey money on EDC, which was very justifiable. They may not think so, but I think we, I, I felt comfortable doing that.
Well, the people that would be responsible for that were not requesting it, so.
Right.
So it's the top.
It's a capital.
These are the non-capitalized revow and land use that aren't in this year's.
Okay.
You moved out Grange Hall, so there's zero for building improvements for general government.
What did we do with the well, you just flipped right by that one, we moved it out, good.
Moved it out, thank you, yeah, that's on the list. Um, budget requests in twenty twenty-one, there is nothing for equipment for general government. Public safety, there's fire department stuff, but it's out pretty far.
So going back, okay, you go, all right, go ahead.
And then you have the ladder seven fifteen, this is the quint.
Yeah.
Um, this is the one that would have the grant.
Right. What if we don't get the grant? Is this all based on the grant?
This is, so when you come over, I'm gonna jump a sheet, I gave this to you Saturday, when you come over here, and I tell you how we're gonna pay for things. So the quint, nine hundred of this is the quint, and three hundred of this is the quint for the match and equipping it. So they wouldn't spend down three thousand, three hundred thousand of their reserve if they didn't get the quint. So that is something we have to adjust, and we won't know that in this budget segment. So I'm thinking you're just concentrating on this year, and then with the board's financial craft of, so that is purely grant-dependent, if you don't get it, you don't spend it.
Right.
And we had to commit, we had to commit to the hundred thousand early on.
Right, I remember when that happened, too.
And then it does, if we do get it, then we needed, they estimated two hundred thousand for stocking.
Right.
So Cindy, you being familiar with grants, how, how likely is it that they will, it's hard to tell, huh?
I have no idea. Never, in my, not in my tenure have we gone for a grant like this.
Okay, oh, this is history, okay.
So police vehicles, they had requested two for next year, you have the two vehicles I'm highlighting. The one with the highest mileage is sixty EM, and I gave you the mileage sheets, this one has far greater mileage than the other.
Ten hours?
Yeah, well, yeah, so.
We've already moved one cruiser out.
So, yeah, so that's, we, the one, they were, they were looking for two cruisers, a fifty-nine was the other one, they're both the same vintage, but fifty-nine had, uh,
Less mile.
Two thousand miles, less miles.
Yeah.
And, uh.
And hours.
Hours was, uh.
Here, I can tell you.
But a few more, I've got it right here, so.
Stabilizes our purchase of people.
Right.
Right, it does, it does.
The other thing we're gonna be doing is, we're gonna be buying hybrids.
You said that?
Oh, yeah.
So that's actually gonna end up saving money, and we haven't been, uh, they've been coming in considerably less than the sixty-eight thousand. But there, there's new vehicle years in twenty twenty, and there's the question as to whether all the stuff that's in the old cruisers will fit into new cruisers.
Right, yeah.
So that's why I'm leaving it at the sixty-eight.
And if you see the remaining here, I will be meeting with Ian to walk through and make sure we completely outfitted him, because if we have, whatever's remaining can be used for a cruiser next year. We can repurpose that money back into capital.
Okay.
And if that's the case, then we actually can go down a little bit more.
Right.
So this is a continued radio replacement Craig had talked about building up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, scrolling down to the fire department, fifty thousand for air packs, sixteen-five for Company Two video accessing camera, eighty-five thousand for the airbags and jaws of life. The AED thumper, well, this is a potential grant of, which I put into the, the possible offset.
Mm-hmm.
For.
There's two or three grants out there for things like that.
Right. Then they're asking for ten thousand for hoses. The thermal imaging cameras.
Right.
I think, Rob, you wanted me to do this.
Yeah.
Right, every other year? And then out, you know, out, they have other items. And here's equipped the quint, and what I wanted to do here for your benefit. So. That's a reserve item.
Hold that thought one, so, you want us to give you a copy of that? Sorry.
If you don't mind. I apologize that I couldn't be here that Saturday.
No, it's all right, it's all right, okay.
So that's equipment for the. So that's equipment for the fire, for police. The body cameras, we've talked about it, there may be a D O J grant.
Right.
Um, they want TASER replacement. We did start the first year of their reserve after the special revenue fund. I guess if it got tight, you might want to use some of that to maybe buy tasers or help contribute to the body cameras. That's an option, part of me would like to see it, let it ride for a year and see what they build for next year, for, for this June thirty, for two years of it, because at the end of the day, I don't think fourteen thousand is going to do that much to the budget, but that's at your discretion.
Right.
Nothing for the radio towers this year, so.
All committed in whatever we got there.
Right.
So salt shed roof.
There's not much we can do there either.
Yeah, we gotta keep the salt dry, at least until it goes on the road.
And then the wood burning stove.
Yeah, we discussed that because it offsets.
Yeah, I, we didn't really discuss it.
Oh, sorry.
I've been waiting to discuss it.
So you got some more information?
I do, actually, I've been looking and reading and trying to justify forty five thousand on a wood burning stove to heat the garage. Um, my concerns are forty five thousand is the starting point. We, we're looking at after all of our trees are, the dead and dying trees are used and what do you think? Even if we say five years?
So your concern is what if our glut of trees goes away and all the dead trees that are dying, will we have trees to operate it?
No, not, not so much that, because there will always be trees to replace it. My concern is the labor intense that it takes to collect those trees, cut those dead trees down again. We're looking at more employees to do that. Now we're also looking at a building that we're going to need to keep this shed, a pole barn, something to keep this wood undercover, because you're not going to let it get rained on or snowed on. So that's like the beginning of what our cost is going to be. I looked into a waste oil furnace burner. And so I'm trying, I guess I'm looking for you or Beth to find out what our waste oil, um, quantity, volume is. Because to put a waste oil burner in is between eight and twelve thousand dollars. And it's a hot air, it does not need, there's a two hundred gallon collection tank that's in that cost. It is run thermostatically, we don't have to worry about somebody going there to fill it with wood. And it's, it's our waste oil, I mean, it's, it seems to me that it, there's no cost there. How much are we paying to have the waste oil removed? And it just seems like a better option to look at right now.
So I think.
To me, I mean.
Okay, I, I think they've used waste oil there before, but I don't remember.
I, Lynn and I, I can't recall.
I talked to North Branford, they have one.
Yeah.
And they, they love it, they have two of them actually for two, two different buildings. Um, and it's all their, you know, waste oil, obviously, it doesn't.
They also buy it to supplement?
They do not need to buy it to supplement it, they all, so what they also do is at their transfer station, it's collected as well. They do have farmers that also will drop it off, drop their waste oil off as well. Um, the trick on the transfer station is making sure that it is transferred and, and examined to make sure that there's no contaminants, okay? So not so much a test, they didn't say, but a visual, make sure there's no water in there um, and whatever other is, um, debris that, that might be in there. But they love it, they've been using it for several years and no cost to them. I also called the company, it's called Energy Logic, and I talked to them and that's where I got the pricing from. And they're more than willing to come down and talk to whoever they want to, we could go to build. Uh, North Branford also invited us to go down and take a look at theirs. But, um, a season, they said, a season is about fifteen hundred gallons, um, which comes out to about twelve hundred hours. It's one point four gallon per hour.
So how big is their building, do you know?
Uh, North Branford, they have two, one is three thousand square foot and one is four thousand square foot approximately.
So, I mean, cubic foot, and then you have to figure out the heat loss because we have the overhead doors and everything.
Well, theirs is in their garage as well, yep, there, that's what they're using it is, is in their garage. So when I talked to Energy Logic, they have three different sizes.
That's the oil, waste oil?
The waste oil, yep. Um, a hundred and forty K, a thousand, two hundred thousand and three, a hundred and forty thousand. But when I gave him the price of the propane heat at seventeen thousand, at about four thou, I'm guessing because I asked for a square footage of the building and I didn't really get a response, so I'm guessing at about, I went over there and looked.
Because I thought she said to you.
The square footage, okay, sorry. Yeah, both, so, good, okay, I didn't, I missed that there, I did, but I didn't.
No, it's okay, she was looking at into all of this.
I got, yeah, because it's been like, like, you know, rolling around in my head, forty five thousand dollars is just the beginning and I see no end. Here, it's a, it's a, you know, one time investment of a heck of a lot less, it's a turnkey with everything, installation and everything between eight and twelve thousand dollars. I just think that that sounds like a much, uh, we, we should at least take a look at that.
Yeah, I was going to say.
You know, and again, we're using, uh, waste oil.
We do have the waste oil in the transfer station, which is probably transferred.
And our own maintenance vehicles.
And our own vehicles, so, and when you drain off on the big dump trucks, you're draining out a lot of oil, so, uh, but it's, uh.
How many pieces of equipment do we have that we, and he, you can use hydraulic oil, it's, you can, you know, there's.
Well, we have ten trucks, so right there, so.
Okay, so he's, okay, and that's what he was saying.
How much is, how much is that, that system that you're talking about?
Eight to ten thousand, total turnkey. Total turnkey. And it's, you know, a thermostatic control.
Yeah.
You leave on a weekend, you can, you know, actually add program this, so that it turns down at four o'clock, you know?
I don't know, can we have a hot yoga at that, because that's what everyone is talking about with this.
Well, you can, you know, turn it down at four, turn it back up at six, you know?
Yeah, so.
I'm going to have you talk to Beth and have you set something up real quick with them.
Okay.
But.
Okay?
Yeah.
Do, do that tomorrow.
I can do that tomorrow. I have a call into Beth, I called her this afternoon to, I was hoping to be able to have some estimate of what our waste oil.
Square footage, fourteen thousand four hundred. If it could be two hundred, four thousand twenty four.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, what was the square footage?
Square feet, fourteen thousand four hundred.
Square footage is fourteen thousand, okay. So I was way under what I was thinking, so, okay.
So again, what you have to look for, the heat loss with the overhead doors and everything.
Oh, I talked to him about that too, because that's making sense now with the, with the cost of the propane being a larger building.
Yeah.
So I will get that, all that information to you, Rob.
Okay, alright.
Sorry, I started working, just processing your changes through, so when you were ready.
Because right now we have ten thousand out of the operating budget in anticipation of this capital expense, right?
Uh, we reduced, hang on, I have the number right here.
Yes, ten thousand, right.
Okay, so that's.
Reduction in, at least.
Right, so we adjust one, you're going to have to adjust the other.
Right. But it sounds like potentially we'll have more information tomorrow.
Very quickly.
Or very quickly.
You also like.
No, I don't, no, I don't, not anymore.
So I'm going to make sure he understands that there's twelve foot overhead doors at every bay, and I don't remember how many bays there are, so.
Five, I'd think, yeah.
Both sides, so.
And I think it's an interesting thing to look into, I do think their, the public works department is taking down enough trees of regular maintenance that they wouldn't have to be like searching for trees to take down.
I'm not concerned about searching, no.
Undercover, you don't usually have to worry about it.
Well.
But it just sounds like there's.
They do burn differently, but let's just remember snow, I mean, if we start to get, if we get snow, you know, are they going to start cleaning off wood piles and, you know? So I know, because I do have a wood furnace, so we, you have to take into consideration some type of a shed, whether it be a pole barn, something. Um, and the other thing that we have to do is at times, because you cannot get into the woods to pull your wood out, buy it sometimes.
Well, that's why we will never have to worry about that, for sure.
Well, if you don't have it available at the town garage and it's, you know, we got snow that we can't get in and get them out.
Um, but, you know, thank you for doing all of that research, that's wonderful.
So, um, okay, we're going to.
I just think a thirty three potential, thirty three thousand dollar savings is worth.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Exploring a little further.
Maybe you, they would start looking.
So we, so this is our standard, uh, replacement cycle for the trucks.
Yep.
And then basically they do one each year. So the loader, we're going to try and, they've been working on. And they're looking for a replacement out, four years out. Picked up the asphalt hot box, that's working well, not only got one situation resolved. Backhoe, because of the size of the town, I mean, it's really necessary, we should have two backhoes. Originally at one point they were talking about replacing one, the old one would go up to the transfer station, but reality is that we do need both backhoes and blowers, so. They're looking for used one for the transfer station. Uh, covers are for the demolition and recyclables. And they're evaluating, just as I said, a different type of sweeper that is supposed to be much more efficient and that will save money in the long run. But that's not this year.
Okay.
So the other big thing is the annual road replacement.
I know, my eyes started to switch.
And I don't look at the screen because the screen makes me dizzy, but I love to.
So, uh, is, is the annual road, and they're doing, they want to do Trobridge Road and, uh, and that's a total replacement and, uh, Great Hillwood.
And so we.
That might be over for discussion, but, uh.
We allocated nothing to that last year?
So last year, in order to do some, um, matches for FEMA.
Yeah.
And understanding they could only do so much, they took that money and helped put it towards the FEMA match, grant match.
Okay.
So they, they cobbled away from some things to, to meet that match.
But generally in, in this line, is that kind of what the trend is, is that?
Yeah, that's why you see it going out each year.
Yeah, I just was wondering what did that.
It trends, the year we thought we were going to have to pay teachers retirement, we didn't do anything, but overall it trends on the low side, three fifty to five fifty a year.
Then this pavement shim and overlay and road approved materials, those are pretty much standard.
And you've got some big stuff out here as well.
So the thing, well, so we got a hundred and five for the B V road over Pine Brook. Those people will be unhappy because B V road will be closed for a while, but that'll have to be done by a contractor.
Here's back to FEMA, so to meet some of the match, they took it from. Yeah.
We're still spending that, we're spending that down in Hemlock Valley right now. Of course, that too.
Senior Center's got nothing. Just a note, on these two things in the senior center, I think Brad explained to you, he'd collect money from rides.
Yeah.
I think that that might be better set up as a capital reserve fund instead of just a senior transportation fund, so that's something I'm going to address before the finance.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's a bad word, yes.
So we already did the legs?
Yes.
Recreation, one of the top things in the study committee was the feasibility study and highlighted in blue are some things you've already shifted. So we didn't have to do additional funding for this boiler, there's enough money between both of these, you know, to do the boiler. Pushed out the driveways in both a year, really the only thing you have left standing is some window replacement.
We're just, those windows there that are really dangerous.
Okay, I was just going to say, I mean, so these are buildings that we are possibly looking at selling in the near future. Not that they could be, will be sold that quickly, but, you know. Right, are we looking at just ones that are going to be falling out tomorrow?
Yeah, or that fall down, if you lift them up, we don't want anybody getting their fingers chopped off because they're big windows and everything, so. And they're, they're falling apart supposedly, so.
I have, I weren't desperately, as the description.
Okay.
Yeah, and then.
So Chaps Court has been kicked out two or three times.
Where are we now?
Chaps Court, oh, that's at Nichols Field, okay.
And normally a capital is a ten thousand dollar threshold, but it's a two year plan.
So, and it's, they were allocated eight thousand for Chaps Court, called Red last year, so this, they'd actually be able to do it.
Yeah, probably next summer, yeah, or this summer, I'm sorry. And then you're on to education, I don't know if you want to look at education capital?
Probably look at it, but if you want to take the time to look at it or you want to just skip over.
Quickly, I guess, I mean, well, I mean, what, what can we do, is there?
You can cry.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've been doing that for the last two weeks. You know, like the new, those stage curtains for the elementary school in the cafeteria.
They rank low in the, in the.
Right, the rank.
In the ranking system, waiting system.
Right.
Yeah, I.
They would be considered a way down the road, so.
So do we keep it there or do we? Let them do it, let them do it.
Saying it, at least.
Okay, okay.
What happened to the ten thousand dollars for the carpeting?
That's, that's somewhere, somewhere.
Right there.
There it is, yeah.
I deleted it.
I mean, ten thousand every year for, is this the high school, this is the middle school? Again, that's for the Board of Finance, right?
So, yeah.
And then here's where you start getting to other ones, I mean, you've got the, each school's got some stuff.
Yeah, the athletic complex.
So the total, uh, total for all the schools for air conditioning was four point two?
Yeah, um, hang on a second. A priority list? Four point three.
Four point three, okay.
So Jay, what this is, is there's a ranking system, so this is, there's a two-stage in the priority ranking and they don't score a three or above, they don't even get considered, and then they get walked through a series of questions to rank them. And there's your lower ones.
Yeah, there's.
And the new library facility, the committee chose not to rank, because they don't know enough information. So that's where that was.
Thank you.
And what Harvey's asked, and I will be doing, I'll be adding a column for Board of Finance as to, for building improvements, how they ranked.
Okay.
So, what I'm gonna do is not give the ranking number, but a numeric number, one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And then some additional vehicles are requesting, things of that nature. Typically, what has happened is the Board of Finance has given the Board of Ed a certain amount of money, and let them prioritize.
Their vehicles, yeah.
Right, so here's some money, or, but their whole capital overall.
Oh, okay.
So here's a chunk of money, you know what you need better than we do, you prioritize and do what you can with what's been allocated.
Yeah.
So the totals for capital, all together are twelve, four, two, five, and then again, walking through revenue sources. So FEMA grants, state town aid road, state local capital improvement, education reserves for some of their items, state school construction, fire department reserves, assumption of eight thousand in bonding, should all of the Board of Ed stuff come to fruition, and then the repurposing of funds, or leftover funds from current capital projects. So there would be ten thousand dollars, ten million, almost eleven million dollars in funding sources. So, which brings you to the taxation amount. And out here, once a plan is developed, we'll be able to populate that. And obviously, for twenty twenty-one, populate, once we have a plan.
So obviously, we can't figure out, you know, what required taxation, because it depends on decisions on.
I mean, on some of this, I could be doing this.
Right.
I could be plugging some of the state grants and stuff to bring it down across the board, you know, as a placeholder, but and, and if you look out to twenty-five, twenty-six, with this six point nine million, that's with the libraries factored in, it's five million.
Okay.
But once, ultimately, we can achieve our goal and map this out for ten years, this is a good tool to keep the public informed as to what the plan is.
And we're looking at doing a, assuming the Board of Education, like Cindy, what we're doing, and Cindy came up with this, another town is using, you wanna explain that, the, the, well, the two things, a day in the life of the town, and also the, uh, the pictogram that they were using.
Oh, all right, let me go grab that for you, you have the day, the day in the life, I'll be right back.
I'll probably do that, I don't think I have it here, oh, here, yeah, she gave me, here's the day in the life, so here's Manchester, so, might be interesting for people to see. Basically, what, what happens on every day we're open. I mean, this was for Manchester, obviously, so.
Yeah, right.
Did you know?
But the other thing is a, uh.
This is a one day?
Yeah.
Wow.
But the idea is that, you know, so, if, for example, it's four point three million for, uh, air conditioning, and, but, they just, we decided not to do it, or do it all one year, but they would know that this year, the elementary school gets done, next year.
Exactly. I think it's good to see that.
This is, yeah, this is a master plan for school district, but I think we could use it townwide.
Did you see this yet?
No.
And the day of the life, I like that, because it's not associating dollars, it's telling people what services are being provided.
Right, so, yeah, because people might not be aware that we have fire, like, full-time fire service on duty.
Right, yeah, I like that, yeah.
Isn't that best? I had gotten that from professional development I did at UConn, and then they had, um, Manchester budget people come in, but this is the South Windsor, and again, you could do, I'm not saying that just for the school district.
Can I draw the pictures on?
If you can do that, yeah, if you can do just as good as they did.
But if you see, they started this in two thousand thirteen, and they continue to update it, and if you take, and you can map out what's happened, like referendum year, and each building, what's happened
Oh, I like that.
across, and then they talk, they have some frequently asked questions, and then you have, uh, milestones, and telling people where they're at. I just think this is awesome. And, and you update it every year, and it's on the website and available, so people know you have a plan. This was from a workshop I attended in
Well, yeah.
sixteen or seventeen, yeah.
I like it, because it's.
Oh, no, they take that back, this was a newer one in another workshop.
It's anticipation, but it's also, I think it helps people who want project funded this year to be like, no, we have a plan to get to your project. And this is, it's laid out, it's in paper, and then if we're not sticking to this plan, then like, you can really hold us accountable, but at least we've created a way to like yeah.
Monitor everything, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah.
This long-range capital improvements, one of the things is like the air conditioning for the schools, they felt like, well, how do you prioritize the school, but if we're showing them that there's a resolve, say, every other year to do a school, you know, and they can see it's on the plan, but more importantly, how we plan to pay for it.
Right.
Right, exactly.
And, and hopefully, with the stabilization.
And you won't hear, oh, the elementary school never gets, you know, or the high school, yeah.
You don't know exactly when it's supposed to happen.
Right, exactly. We won't be dealing with the athletic complex thirty years later, and people saying.
And well, the whole idea is, again, get stuff out on our plans, and to be talking about it and preparing for it, and we really should have, and we'll all be long gone by then, except for maybe Teresa, is a fifty-year plan. You'll have to make sure it happens.
But I also think that that's what's helpful about your ranking system, is that it doesn't allow anything to get lost, you know, off the charts. It's there, we're following it.
And as I'm talking, and it's been built into another worksheet, with departments and stuff, I have out further, beyond ten years in another spreadsheet, and I'm starting to populate that.
Right.
Like, think about, when's your roof need to be done, when's your, ultimately, you will have, it's not just how do we acquire this stuff, it's how do we make, what's our asset management plan?
Right, yeah.
It's a tool.
So, the roof is thirty years, but might as well put it out there.
Start planning it, right.
Right, yeah, and I, I mean, it's.
Whether you're putting money aside for it, or doing whatever, I mean, these roofs, or what was the school roof? The high school roof, three hundred, was that?
Six.
Six hundred, that's, paving was three hundred, whatever it was, there's a lot of thing there.
So this is, this is a good idea, too, this seems like, like something that the Board of Ed would do?
No, this would be done probably by the Board of Finance.
By the Board of Finance, okay.
Yeah.
My office, okay, because we'd, we'd make it, um, all-inclusive of the town.
Of every, okay, okay. Because this is more education.
I've seen this, actually, I got that at a, at a UConn workshop last year, but I saw the superintendent speak to the plan two, three years ago. And it's a.
I just think it's a great idea for a way to keep people in the loop as to what's happening, and I think that we're doing things really good.
I think the more education we have for the public on finances, the better we are.
But by planning.
And planning, yep.
Because, and, and I know, I know Rob's heard me say this, when Mark Walter was first elected, and I came up four years later, people would say, well, everyone knew we were gonna do that, and we're like, well, where's it, where's it documented?
Right.
So this is ensuring that it's documented.
Right. We're in the age of documentation.
Oh, yeah.
So, now that we see everything we have here.
This is where.
Yeah.
What else would we like to discuss before we, uh, move this to the Board of Finance, our budget?
I mean, we're giving them, it sounds as though we were moving it in a way that would probably are we moving it with capital, or are we saying
So.
based on the new kind of modeling we have, and we want even more information from our financial advisor? We'd like to have the capital conversations.
So we're gonna have to word this in such a manner that that's what we're going to do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I mean, that, that's my main thing, and the second thing that I want to communicate to them is that I would like us to look at loan opportunities to address the public safety crisis, that is, the dead trees.
Okay.
Because I see that.
But that's all capital.
That's capital, right, right, and the trees is such a large thing, it's like, it's almost capital that we're talking about, if it's.
It's definitely.
Right, it would be non-capitalized. Capitalized, yeah.
Right, but it's, it's numerically in the category of, you know, for large capital things.
So how do you want the resolution to sound, look like?
I don't know, but before we go to that.
Yeah, I'd also like to take a break.
I was gonna say, does anyone know a break? He's not drinking the water?
I know. Is it, yeah.
Yes, a break is fine, so we'll take a brief break, five, ten minutes, so.
More water, yeah.
If I'm, or if I'm water box.
So Jay, what would you like, I mean, we can give you the proposed cap. So before we go to a, back in session. So, so before we go to a potential budget resolution, we'll reach out, since we have public finally, for a comment, so. Jay?
I do, uh, I'll just keep this to dollars and cents, and not problematic here, so I under, I understand that, um, you're currently trying to write a grant for a quint here in town. I used to work on a quint, West Hartford ran three quints and two engines. When we, when I first started, we had five engines, two ladders. A quint is an engine with a ladder on it, does all the functions of an engine. So, uh, it's a nice, it's a nice truck, if they keep it short enough, and they keep it maneuverable enough, they can get to a lot of places. If we get a grant for it, it's a million dollar plus firetruck.
Right.
And if we were to get a quint, I would hope that we're gonna get rid of at least two engines that we currently have.
At the beginning, they did talk about replacement.
Because we never needed the three engines in the first place. But you just don't need it, you don't get the manpower out to get those engines on the road. So you don't need, you don't need to maintain that third engine, and a quint is an engine. So for all intensive purposes, smaller towns such as Salem, Basra, who have a quint already, they rule the quint as the first truck down. If you have the hoses, if you lie to the building, it can be put off. So, with that said, I noticed two hundred thousand dollars to equip the. If you're getting rid of two of your engines, all that hose, passed the hose test year in and year out, can be put on a quint. Your nozzles, your appliances, your hands will lose, all your other stuff that is serviceable can go on that new firetruck, that you wouldn't have to purchase. If we don't get a grant, that's a lot of money for a firetruck. And ladder truck.
Okay, thanks.
Before we received that ladder truck from Essex, the town didn't have a ladder. And in Salem, Salem, Polchester have, we don't have, there's a lot of areas you can't even get a ladder in this town. So, you know, a lot of people talk about what an engine can do, what a quint can do, and they can all do it all, there's no ratings to them. They're interchangeable, basically, except one has a ladder on it.
So, all that thought, which of the engines would, could that truck replace it?
Uh, let's see, engine two is probably the oldest, I think they got that slated for a refer or something out.
Very.
What page are you heading to?
Uh, somewhere on four or five.
Oh.
Five.
So they got a, uh, two thousand eight Spartan, four guys pumper, ninety-seven pumper, that's, uh, two fifteen.
Yeah, engine two fifteen would be the oldest one, that would, that one I would get rid of, they still carry engine two, the old engine five, I know they're slated, it's a parade vehicle, back.
There's, no, it's not, it's not on any replacement list, so.
Okay. I, I thought they were still, I don't know if that, if it's held against the town as far as the process, we'll have an engine five here.
No, it says it's not considered a piece of fire equipment.
Well, I, I wouldn't refer to engine two, I'd get rid of engine two, and I would consider getting rid of one other, whether it be engine four, or engine, engine one.
Okay.
And, uh.
And you're saying the equipment, the hoses and all the rest of the stuff could go to the quint?
Right, that two hundred thousand for equipment is, it's putting brand-new everything on a brand, you know, the truck doesn't come fully.
Yeah. Right.
The other thing I would say is, I hope the quint we're buying is not a parade firetruck, we don't need chrome and fancy everything from head to toe, you know, look at some of the dirty city rigs, they come in with painted wheels, and they come in with the, the regular Joe firetruck, because that's what fire will do, they go for fires, riding parades. I just noticed there was Hearst equipment replacement, and I'm gonna assume the eighty-five thousand, that was for both sets.
Yeah.
And, and the airbags?
And the airbags, yeah. I, I would suggest, if they haven't already, uh, looking at the different manufacturers now that are coming out with the rescue equipment.
We're looking at, uh,
You wanna test?
Three or four different manufacturers.
Okay, and I would recommend not buying both sets at the same time, because then you age out at the same time down the road. I understand there was a problem with them at an auto accident, but there, there's no way both sets of our Hearsts have total failure that day. I'm not buying, I'm not buying that.
Okay.
You know, that's an operator. The AED thumper I saw on there, excuse the ambulance, we got a mess.
They're actually, um.
We asked that.
Yes, we did ask that.
These are not for the ambulances?
Yeah, they're not for the ambulances.
For the trucks.
You wanted to put one on the rescue, and then I don't know, we'll check on it, but they were not for the ambulance, yeah, otherwise, yes, your answer would be yes, but they're not for the ambulance, so. The AEDs were replacing some of the older ones that we had, too, so.
And it looks like there's a, there, there's a FEMA microgrant for them.
Right, so if there's no FEMA grant, then we'll have to have that discussion.
I heard you talk about, a little bit about radios. I had, had heard somewhere that possibly they were gonna buy a radio for every firefighter that was required. I don't know that that's true, but I know that that isn't a necessity.
Yeah.
If you have a radio for a riding position.
So there's, uh, quite honestly, I'm not sure of all the nuances of the, uh, radio system.
The new radio.
And, um, it sounds like just about everybody ends up with a radio, believe it or not. That was with a big grant and everything, so.
Right.
That did come with the.
Yeah, that's part of the townwide radio project, that's what we reached out to Jiffy and Craig to get some clarification.
Right, I know, but I thought it was a grant.
Right, uh, makes no sense to have every volunteer have a radio on their own vehicle. Uh, half of them don't go to, you know, they don't go to the call, and then the other issue is, they should be going to the firehouse to get in the firetruck, not taking a personal vehicle to.
Right.
See, anyway. And you know, I just urge diligence in oversight of our fire department, because we have personal intimate knowledge of the expenditures, and saw it as an employee for six years. When they didn't do the renovation, and you allocated amount of money, and do what they were charged to do in the first place, and we had to give them an extra hundred and four thousand. And when they said the next firetruck would cost less, that's why they could borrow that hundred and four thousand.
Right.
So, I'm all for firefighters, I've been on my whole life, I'm all for giving them the equipment they need, but I'm also coming from paid departments that have been underscrewing, and we don't get help building. So. I see they're requesting another full-time employee. Two years ago, we managed to cover 99% of the shifts, one full-timer and five dedicated part-timers. Now, since changes were made in the last couple of years, it's not going as well, so. Look, when you hire a full-time employee and put him in charge while he's still on probation, your dedicated employees leave. I'm all for firefighters, three guys on duty all the time would be perfect, it'd be a lot safer than two.
Yeah.
But, our town is obviously under financial constraints, so, um, that's up to you guys to review, that's just my two cents.
So, if I might ask, how many, so during the day, how many ambulance calls were firefighters going on?
I have the numbers.
Percentage? Next door.
It would be three to one, you, you do three ambulance calls to every fire call at the end of the year. Majority is medical calls, every of the, every one of these times.
Yeah.
And the thought for having three people was always if two of the paid staff had to do the full medical call, transport and everything, you had one person left active. But over the years, every fire department was transitioned to majority medical.
Yeah.
And if our full-time employee and our part-timers aren't coming here to, the roles have reversed, if they're not here to be EMTs first, take our ambulance out, do the run reports, so the ambulance can do the billing, and they don't need to be working here. Our, our main focus is EMS at this point in this town, our fire, fire numbers are down across the country.
So I will tell you that the last people we've hired are very good EMTs, and they understood that early on, so. Because they were, they knew they're gonna be taking, and these are part-timers, so.
Yeah, and people, like, um, the part-timers save the town costs and benefits. Like paying them when they're on duty. All the small towns are going to, more towns are adding on, whatever. I would look at the cost of the equipment in Quint, I would look at the cost of the Hearst equipment, with what you could spread out. I would really look at what you need to, what you wanna get rid of if that grant, Quint is approved by a grant.
Yeah.
And if it's not approved by a grant, that's an awful lot of money to spend.
Well, I can honestly say that if it doesn't get approved by a grant, we will not be revisiting it this year, or probably for several years, so. Because we do have mutually capabilities if necessary for what, for what it's doing for us. Good information about the engines and, uh, and kind of dives with earlier information we had.
I need all my notes. I'm not gonna talk about the bulk of this budget cycle, um, that's for a regular board selectman's meeting.
You can come see me and talk about it too.
I, I will.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, you know, thanks for all your work, I'm sorry I couldn't spend every budget workshop with you this year, uh, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry you were on vacation.
We're just the beginning. We're just, we're just the beginning, come when the finance starts there.
Yeah, thank you for your insight and diligence.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you know, you have access to some full-time firefighters who are part-time here, and I would say, when you hear something from one person, check with it out there.
I can say that regarding all of this, uh, we've been asking lots of questions and have other people giving us information and, uh.
And there's, there's plenty more career firefighters in town other than I.
Yeah.
And a lot of them don't come to these meetings, but.
To avoid any, uh, sort of, uh, appearance of prejudice or whatever, we're actually getting people in from outside too. So, because the, the capital costs for the fire department over the next 10 years, over three million, and would be four million with the Quint, if I remember correctly, so, um, and we're asking other people to, uh, uh, take a look at the operation in total.
Right, I mean, you don't necessarily have to replace something just because it's old, doesn't mean it's unserviceable.
Yes, that's something we've, uh, been investigating also, because it was, uh, we spent a lot of money on equipment this year, making sure that everything was up to date.
And, and maintenance sometimes, as it is with our own personal vehicles, maintenance on a good used vehicle, much better spent than buying it.
Yes.
And these, these engines have no miles on them, they have hours and years, but they're kept inside, they'll do a ton of miles, so if you're ma- maintain, I mean, the engine I left in when I retired had 110,000 miles on it. My last truck, these have nowhere near that.
Yeah.
So just because they may be pushing 20 years old, or whatever our oldest one is, doesn't mean it's out of service, so. Thank you.
No, thank you. Ed? Nothing?
Fine, thank you.
Fine? What's new down at the Opera House? Okay.
Just a point he doesn't stick drinks for all of us.
Okay, so. We're at the point where we need to make a decision on what we're going to do here, we've been given all the figures, uh. As, as frustrating as they are. Oh, there's one here, there's multiples here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we only need one, if you can't find it.
I'll let you know.
Been hanging around me too long.
So.
Wait, has it greased so quickly?
Well, I couldn't find stuff today twice, that's not good.
So, uh, we have to figure out how to make this recommendation. Cause right now, I'm not making a motion here, I'm just reading it, uh, recommended to the Board of Finance for fiscal year 2021, a budget of XYZ dollars, which represents general government, shared services, capital and reserves. So, um, having said that, obviously that would be general government, shared services, and not capital and reserves.
Can I make a suggestion, and this was a citizen's comment, and, and I'm sorry, Linda, you gave this to me, it should say town government. This general government refers to administrative, and shared services can get taken out of it, because it's in town government.
Town government.
Yeah.
Delete shared services.
Cause town government encompasses public safety, public works.
Yes.
But you don't have capital and reserves.
Right, capital and reserves are not included.
Now, you could take a quick look at reserves and see if you're good with all of the reserves, and then it would just say it doesn't include capital.
I'll look at reserves.
I looked at the motion that, that was made on the ERB, it said, motion made by, recommended Board of Finance for fiscal year 2018, budget of 11 million, blah, 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 which represents general government, which we're now changing to town government.
Remember, a citizen was confused by that.
Yeah, um, shared services, capital and reserves, the Board of Select's budget has made no provision for the one point, whatever, governor's proposed teaching retirement benefit assessment to our community.
If you look on your screen, I can make it easy for you, reserves, there's the capital project savings, again, this is to pay for the projects, this goes down, this goes up, right? Ambulance, 25,000 seems to be sufficient to set aside. Reval, 30,000, because we're heading into a statistical? They call it a, not full, this was a full one, right, because we upped it, so that we, we're good. Education is 100,000 each year, it's, this is the one issue, do you just leave that flat and begin the discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So you could, you know, and I guess you could say it includes everything but the ca- the, the general fund support taxation of capital, because we have the state grants built in, right? So if you did.
Next door. Next door.
You're gonna be next door.
Oh, they're planning zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, go around, gotta go out and around, okay. You took half the room.
You're rolling everybody off.
It's always some new people.
Everybody, you got some.
Are we gonna be?
We're not much later. So really. The real issue, this line right here. So if you could say, let me give you these totals, because this is everything but taxation for capital, because it fills in the state grants. Come on. Make sure my number's total appropriately when I'm done.
Like you're doing that or?
How about that, Theresa?
No, it's good.
Oh, it is, it's right.
Hmm?
Numbers roll in.
Yeah, that's amazing.
They don't ever roll down though, they only roll up.
36010179, 36.
I know.
336110. Off somewhere, just give me one second, please.
What did you say that budget was a few years, 12?
Um, 11 billion 180, 194, that was 17.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't include the government.
It doesn't include that.
Thank you, because I've been calling.
No, you never give the.
You're like, what?
Just shoot me now.
No, that year was a total of 30 million 915.
Oh, then I think we're, we're doing good then.
At the public hearing, 30 million 95470 is what was the, I mean.
Just.
By the way.
That was 1718?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it failed.
So one of the things is on the Quint, is that was one of the questions we asked about the equipment, being going off another engine on it there.
Yeah. Well, didn't they propose it to the Board of Finance that way?
Wouldn't call it.
That, that it was going to be replacing. Right.
Uh-huh, that's why it's not total. I missed a line. There we go.
I gotta undo my move there.
We just need to get back up.
Yeah.
And what you might wanna do, you know, is, I don't know if you want it in your motion or in Rob's commute K, that you would look forward to working with the Board of Finance. Or, you know, the collaborative effort based on the new capital policy, et cetera, et cetera. Cause you're not shirking your duties, you, you need to, you don't want it to appear you are, you, you wanna talk about collaborative effort going forward.
So what is the budget we're looking at now? When you, when you get it back up or whatever, if you're gonna put it back.
That's right, oh, I didn't, I'm sorry. 13 million 328 357.
13, 3. 13.
You got 1.6 million in capital not there.
13 million, what?
28, 357, which represents, uh, uh, town government, debt service. And capital, um. And capital projects, not in.
Next door, next.
Next door.
Yeah, you can put reserves in there, and, and, um, capital projects, net of, uh, general fund support slash taxation. Sorry.
Capital project, what, net of?
Um.
General fund.
Support taxation, because when you look at that general fund support, that's what, after we apply everything else, that's what you'd have to tax for if you're gonna do it.
Net of general fund support, what?
Or taxation.
For.
For taxation.
Yeah.
I couldn't quite get.
Sorry, I know it's a little complicated, but.
And then without shared services, no shared.
Yeah, because we folded it, shared services right into general government last year.
Okay, yeah, I can take those words out, so it's.
Into town government or general government?
Town government.
It's in general government.
Oh, that's for sure.
Which is not town government?
I, I wrote it out.
Okay, fine.
General government is planning, zoning.
Yeah, yeah.
All the administrative, and then town government is public safety, public works, right?
So you don't, I'm still not following what you're saying there about town government, which represents, take out completely general government, or town government and general government?
Town government.
Okay.
And if you want, you can put in parentheses, general government, if you want, makes you feel better.
No, it doesn't, I just wanna understand what that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
I remember, I wanna make sure I'm doing the right motion, but.
Few years ago, a citizen said, because then I would say total general government budget, it's the town government budget, just to, because it encompasses all of that.
I'm just gonna scoot over.
But I, I want in that communication to say, this, kind of how they talked about the teacher's retirement fund as, like a moving part about trees.
Right.
Is that okay?
Well, trees is in there, the half million, that discussion for trees.
In the motion? It's.
Well, it'll be discussed in the, in the portion, so that's where.
It's in the budget.
Half million's in the budget.
A half million's in the budget, but I want a larger conversation with the Board of Finance about financing trees, so it, that half.
But should that be in the motion?
So that half million could be, if we finance trees.
Could be.
It could be 150,000.
But then it would come out of the budget.
And then, right.
But do you want, the, the other thing is, if you don't wanna overcomplicate your mo- motion, is then to have a consensus of the board that when Rob presents, he's very clear about working together on trees and capital and stuff.
Yeah, I would like that when you do the history, like, when Linda was going back with the history with TRP, it, it said TRP, and then it kind of creates a. A record of, this is an enormous thing that our town's dealing with, that needs more due diligence than what can be. Cause it's, it's our largest increase in cost, right, 325,000.
Well, it kinda goes back to what we were saying about capital, you're documenting it.
Right, yeah.
But you're, you're documenting it and putting it on the record.
Yeah, that's.
Well, can you make the motion, and then under your discussion part of the motion, have your paragraph that says, at, when presented to the Board of Finance, the Board of Select, I would like to, you know, see trees looked at, or whatever, however you wanna word it, and then, um, then you make your.
Well.
Whoa.
So there is.
Or not.
Why don't you write out what you would like? Why don't you write out what you would like?
So.
So it might be easier to get it down. You wanna blank these up?
I'm breaking up this discussion.
So, well, because it's, there's, the other part of what you were saying of documenting. Part of the reason that capital is not included is because their, because of the, the policies that we, the, I don't, I don't.
Long range capital plan.
Yeah, the long range, yeah, I was just saying whether or not we can. Like how factual this has to be, or if we can.
How about we look forward to working with the Board of Finance on addressing our capital budget and. Senses or costs involved with. Best way to handle dead and dying tree situation. Funding that, funding the dead and dying trees.
Right. Are we allowed to say the public safety crisis? Or is that?
I wouldn't put that in motion.
That's what, that's kind of where I was asking for, yeah. But so do we wanna say, based upon the new system?
For evaluating.
For evaluating capital projects. This budget does not include capital, and we look forward to working with the Board of Finance to address costs related to dead and dying trees.
And capital projects in general. Because it's all part of that.
Right.
That was very well said. Linda, but Linda can listen to the tape if you all like it, and I can put it into the motion.
She's writing away, so she may have most of it.
And then we'll come back and revisit it.
I gotta get back on it, where did I go? I can't read it.
Want to try repeating it?
So the reason of pulling that out specifically, when it's in the budget? What, what would the reasoning be on that?
Are you acknowledging in your mind that it's just not sufficient?
I acknowledge that it's not sufficient, and also, I think we should be looking at a short term loan for trees, and that it isn't necessarily.
But, so I, I go back to, should that be part of a motion, or should that just be part of a discussion?
Well, that's gonna be part of a discussion with the Board of Finance.
Right.
They're gonna make the ultimate decision on that.
So should it, I mean, I don't see the need for being that specific on that in a motion. Just my thought.
I don't think it's, probably has to be that specific at this point. A lot of numbers up there.
Word that's right, uh, no, word that's down.
So do you wanna read that motion that you wrote, Linda, Theresa?
Somebody?
Somebody give you a copy?
I think we're gonna go backwards into the disabled. I just write it, I just said it out loud.
No, I was talking about that one right there, because I'm saying, I don't know that we need to be so specific and add dead and dying trees into our motion.
Yeah, I guess the, the other benefit of potentially adding dead and dying trees. So that, the, the motion that talked about the teacher's retirement board, part of it, for me, is that it sends a message. To everyone saying, we can't do our budget because there's this major thing going on, just like the teacher's retirement board does, and it kind of documents, from our perspective. To, just upwards, that this is a huge cost that our town is facing. That needs to be dealt with immediately, within the next two, one to three years. And that.
So.
The same way that communicating that, like, the teacher's retirement stuff, like, this is, like, we could've just put that into the budget or budgeted something there, but. All, like, many communities said, this is a huge cost we're facing, and we can't properly budget for this.
So, so I agree that it should be in there, so, because that is a very big part of our budget and what's impacting the town from all aspects, from public safety to public works to. And just, of course, the capital costs involved, so. And it gives a good record of, that we're approaching it, which is always valuable if there does, if there is something that bad that happens out there. So.
But you just think it's too specific to pull that one specific?
I, I, I think that. Doing this because you wanna look at a short term loan is not the way to do it in.
So, she's not addressing whether it's a short term loan, because she's just saying that she wants to have it looked at in detail, because it has such an impact. Totally up to the Board of Finance how it's addressed.
Okay.
So.
So then we're not gonna do a motion then tonight?
No, no, we are going to do.
Or she has to look?
We absolutely have to do a motion tonight.
Today's dropped a date.
So we're gonna listen, Linda's gonna listen to this now, and we're gonna.
Who are you guys, tell me, like, like, here's, here's.
I'm confused.
Wait a minute.
Okay, yeah.
What I got?
Here.
Tell me if you, you know, for like a motion, it's gonna be a two sentence motion, not a, not a one sentence.
And Linda, give me a minute, because I'm gonna type it right up on the screen so they can look at it while you say it. That way.
So I got.
Yeah.
Hang on, hang on.
I got, you ready?
In a really large, large font.
Motion by, like, seconded by, like, to recommend to the Board of Finance. For fiscal year. Twenty twenty-one. A budget of thirteen million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Which represents how government, debt service, reserves.
Hang on a second, I have to type up.
And capital projects, net of general fund support.
Okay.
For taxation. And believe that, you know, in that period.
Period.
Now, I, I think people won't understand what net of general, they won't understand what that means, so, you know, we can pick it apart after we get it up on the screen. All right, then, next sentence, based upon.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Based upon the new system for evaluating capital projects. The Board of Selectmen. And I, I just looks forward to working with the Board of Finance to evaluate capital projects. To include, and that's where I lost it, so. So I figured the include could be.
Dead and dying trees.
And what, you know.
I'm okay with that.
Whatever, other things you wanna maybe point out in that motion and things that you didn't cover.
I think all we have to do is to, to include funding for dead and dying tree reform.
Yeah, but you have an off, you have, there's other capital that you have in place.
So hang on, so capital projects to include funding for dead and dying trees and the capital improvement budget. But up here, I think back to what you had, Linda, which represents town government, debt service, reserves, and capital projects.
And capital, it wasn't projects.
But there is, but there is no capital, it really is no capital, it's only a trend. Uh, I know, I know, I know, I'm just reading it, it's nicer that it's in writing.
Right, so that, that to me, if you didn't sit in here, you would have no idea what that meant.
So hang on a second, I'm gonna copy it.
If you were sitting here, you might have no idea.
No, I'm gonna copy it and just play with it for a second.
So people are gonna wanna be seeing that, so we need to make that plain and simple English.
Right.
Right, yes.
And that's why I think it was complicated for people to understand what that meant. Like, I'm still a little thrown out on the general government, town government.
You don't remember the town meeting when a citizen went nuts about what is the difference between general and town government?
No, I don't remember that, but.
Maybe you didn't go. Maybe you looked out, but, okay, so, hang on a second. Which represents town government, debt service, and reserves. The budget does not include any capital funding. That would be funded by taxation. Because that's what it is, there's nothing, because we've got low sip and tar in there.
What we, what we added in, in when we did the TRP, you know, because it's the budget, it's, we said the Board of Selectmen budget has made no provision, and that's the word.
Oh, I like this, the Board of Selectmen budget.
Budget has made no provision. No provision for the, and then it should be a dollar amount.
For any capital that would be funded by taxation.
Well, we don't have a dollar amount there just yet, because that would be determined by.
Right.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, they, the TRP had.
Yeah, that had, that had a amount.
Because it was one item that you weren't including in your budget, this is a number of items.
So, the next sentence, based upon the new system for evaluating capital projects for the Board of Selectmen.
You don't have to say looks forward to it.
I would lead with the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah. Be with it.
I was just trying to write fast.
Nope.
Okay.
I always say Board of Selectmen.
I'll say, you wanna say looks forward to a motion, to me, that's something you put in the paragraph upon the discussion of the motion.
No. 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 Right.
But yet you wanna include the evaluation in your motion. The Board of Selectmen requests. Request the opportunity to work with the Board of Finance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To evaluate.
Yeah.
To evaluate.
Yeah.
There again, Linda, the Board of Selectmen request the.
The Board of Selectmen requests.
The opportunity.
The opportunity.
To work with Board of Finance.
Um, to work with the Board of Finance.
To evaluate.
To evaluate capital projects.
And I'm gonna change this to, to capital needs, because some things are items, not projects. Needs.
Two include, that's where you get two more include.
Measuring capital needs and the corresponding, and I would say, and their funding. Or measuring capital needs and funding of the capital.
For capital tree.
Capital budget. As well as the.
Removal of, for, of dead and dying trees. For the removal of dead and dying trees.
And funding of the capital budget as well as.
Because the dead and dying trees was really operating.
Funding for the.
Really, right?
Removal.
It wasn't really in your capital budget anyway.
Dead and dying trees.
Where was that?
It was in your operating.
It's in the operating budget.
So try this.
But he has to have your debt service or reserves.
What's that is?
And reserves.
And reserves.
Evaluate.
Evaluate. Capital needs. Measuring funding, capital budget.
Um, oops, but I would, under, under capital needs. Um, I would include as a result of the new policy or in accordance with long range capital improvements or something like that.
Put that in there, so.
Thought I can't type when people are watching.
You're doing good.
Just think, if, if I was typing, we still we have to recommend.
And the, and the work of the long, okay, or the evaluation or the work, you wanna say the.
Or recommendations?
Oh, okay.
They don't recommend, they evaluate.
They evaluate.
So evaluation.
So evaluation.
Evaluations. And the evaluation.
Process conducted by.
Sure, now I'm gonna put lots of words.
I'm sorry.
But we'll get it all down and then we'll clean it.
In accordance with the new or current policy and evaluation.
Called cut and paste.
Funding of capital budget as well as funding for the removal of dead and dying trees. I think that pretty much does it.
Because the financial planner is gonna help us pick through the funding portion.
Right, he's gonna tell us, based on Board of Finance policies.
Yeah.
What you, you can't, you can't do in the structuring of it.
Okay.
Let me do a save as on this sucker.
Can you?
I can't email it from this laptop. I didn't log on to email on this. Any other changes? Before, we were writing this all on paper, scribbling it passing.
Could be a comma after the amount.
Where are you?
Right after the amount. Thirteen million, three twenty-eight.
You got it.
And funding of our capital budget. That last sentence.
Thank you.
You already showed something earlier.
But it's very complicated, because you have some serious issues that you need to work on, you're not, you're not ignoring them, you're attempting to, to work on them and.
I, that's good.
Yeah.
As far as looks good.
Excellent job.
When I'm doing this.
Great job, Eddie.
Thirty years from now, I'll be like.
I think we were saying fifty.
I know, that's what I was like.
I'll be long gone.
I'll make the motion. That. To recommend to the Board, what?
Sorry about that, I won't type anymore.
To recommend to the Board, Board of Finance for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, a budget of thirteen million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven. Which represents town government debts, debt service and reserves. The Board of Selectmen budget has made no provision for any capital that would be funded by taxation. The Board of Selectmen requests the opportunity to work with the Board of Finance to evaluate capital needs in accordance with the new capital policy and the evaluation process conducted by the Long Range Capital Improvement Committee. And funding of the capital budget as well as funding for the removal of dead and dying trees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
No.
No, thank you both so much.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Almost opposed, so, unanimous? We're there. Kinda.
You know what, Linda, I'm taking a picture, that's just a place safe.
Hey, hey, I'd rather leave mine as long as I have the word.
I don't wanna have to recraft this sucker. There you go.
If there is no additional business to discuss, someone like to make a motion? Rejourn for the evening.
I'll make a motion.
Since I'm looking at you, but I could be talking to Carly, would you like to second that?
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. And thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah.
For your input.
I'll give you a vote next time, next time.